I will call to order the December 11th regular meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I'll ask Mr. Kristofferson to make note of the roll call. This time, I would ask everyone to rise as Frank Heinz leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Frank. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. There have been no changes to the agenda we received on Thursday, so I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second? I'm moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Okay, the agenda is adopted. Moving into dates to remember, December 18th, next Monday, is the Legislature School Board Luncheon at 11:30 at Huron High School. This will be a legal posted board meeting. December 25th through the 29th is the holiday break, no school. January 1st, New Year's Day holiday, no school that day. January 8th will be the Board of Education meeting at 5:30 here in the IPC. January 10th is an early release day. January 15th, Martin Luther King Holiday, no school that day. January 20th, Credit Recovery Day. January 22nd, Board of Education meeting at 5:30 in the IPC. And January 29th is the Huron High School Registration Open House from 5:30 to 8:45. And December 22nd is a full day of school that day. That's the last day of classes for the 2017. And those are our days to remember. Next item is community input for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody present for community input for anything not on the agenda? Seeing nobody come forward, we have no conflict in disclosure or consideration of waivers tonight. Moving into the consent agenda, Superintendent Schools recommends approval of the following: Approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings. Consideration and approval of bills. Approval and/or correction of the financial report. We have eight new hires that require Board approval to be covered by our Workman's Compensation Plan. We have three resignations for Board approval. Pam Howard is the Transportation Department with one year of service. Lisa Bolster, a sped paraeducator with two months' service. And Chris Clay is elementary music teacher with 33 years of service, effective at the end of the 2017-18 school year. We have four gr- uh, one, let's see, one, two, three, four grants for approval. Two from Carol Tompkins, one from Kelly Kristofferson, and one from Terry Roder. We have requests permission to let bids for a prime vendor for food. We need to set the 2018 Combined City School Election Date of April 10th, 2018. And the combined election agreement with the city of Huron for 2018. That is our consent agenda. We can pass it with one motion, or if any Board member would like to pull any item out for new business, we can do that. Move approval of consent?
One second.
I'm moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted. Now I'll turn it to Mr. Nebelsek, as he celebrates his successes in our district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to congratulate little shared from the Washington 405 Center that the following students are congratulated for being selected to participate in the South Dakota Elementary Festival Honor Choir, which will be held in conjunction with the 50th Annual South Dakota Choral Day on the South Dakota State Campus on February 8th, 2018. Those selected were Maddy Jurgens, Micah Larson, Lute Culeer, and Logan Liondecker. There were 29 singers who auditioned from Washington in order to be a part of that festival. There were 800 additions sent in and 180 youth were selected by the music staff of South Dakota State. The students will need to prepare five songs before attending the large choir practice. Congratulations to the following Huron Tiger football players for being named Allstate. Gabe Rigger, a junior Allstate Offensive Guard. Chipper Schillingstad, a junior Allstate Defensive Back. Matt Kots, junior Allstate Longsnapper. Zach Simmonsma, senior Honorable Mentioned. And Jackson Hook, senior Honorable Mentioned. And so congratulations to those five Allstaters. And then for a thank you, I'd like to thank the Central Administrators Administrative Assistance, all of the folks who work for us in our offices, as they've been working diligently to put on the all-staff open house here in this room on Wednesday from 2 to 5 for the holiday season. And Board members, if you can stop up during that time for refreshments and to meet staff. Some are able to come for an hour or so, some just stop in and say hi, but you're certainly welcome to come. And I thank the admin assistants for putting all of that together. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek. Moving into Board Reports, our first report is the presentation of the Classified Employee of the Month. Tanya Whitmore, Administrative Assistant at the Office of Special Services, has been selected for this month. Mrs. Waylander is going to do the presentation.
Mrs. Waylander is correctly, we're watching the monitor, so we'll get there in a second. Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm here to recognize Tanya Whitmore, who has worked in the Office of Special Services for the past three years. During this time, Tanya has helped the program become more efficient with the implementation of an online computerized program to manage special education and 504 records. She has become an expert at managing the program and a valued resource for the entire staff. She is always looking for more ways to streamline the program and make it more, work better for everyone. She also manages the Medicaid program throughout the district. She has continually updated this program and maintained all the records needed to remain in compliance. All staff and data collection has been updated over the last year in the Medicaid program. This process is a huge learning experience for Tanya and for myself. And we continue to work with the state to ensure all the requirements were met and paperwork was submitted correctly. The greatest asset Tanya has brought to the Office of Special Education, Special Services, is her desire to learn and become a valuable resource for everyone. Tanya's attended IEP trainings and has learned a great deal about the process and IEP requirements. She's always willing to help others and find the information they need to perform their duties. So, congratulations, Tanya. Your work is very important. Thank you, Tanya.
Thanks, Tanya. Okay, our next report is a good news report from the Washington 405 Center. Fifth grade band members are here, and Mrs. Foss and Laura Beck are going to be presenting.
I'm very excited to present the good news from the Washington 405 Center. Mrs. Beck, our fifth grade band director, will presenting the good news for our fifth grade Tiger Band program. I did tell her, I wrote up this big piece about how great it is to have a fifth grade band director, which it is. I'm all about the band, so having this at my school, I'm very proud of this program because it gives a good foundation for the Huron Band program here in Huron. So, we did ask these, our fifth graders, to come, and Mrs. Beck is going to explain a little bit about what a day in the life of a band person looks like. And I just want to say that I have had so many compliments from the fifth grade teachers. The kids can't wait to go to band, they can't wait to go to their lesson, and I've asked all of the teachers and staff at the school to go and watch on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday when she has all the band together. I've been in there many times, and I say, "How can you deal with the noise?" And I was corrected with, "It is not noise, it's..." What did you say?
Music.
Music. Well, you have to understand, when she gets on the podium, it is totally quiet. Not one instrument is going. When she walks off that podium, everybody's making joyful noise, okay? Let's put it that way. But I'm not going to talk anymore, but I am so proud of this program, and just take some time one day and come over, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 12 to 12:35 during your lunchtime, pop in, and you will just enjoy this wonderful music that is made by our fifth grade scholars. So, it's all yours.
I don't know what else to say. I don't think I can get through there. You can come real easy. Music to my ears is what it is, and I stopped being able to hear that well a long time ago. The fifth grade band, the Tiger Cub Band, meets every Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They are divided into two different bands that were split randomly based on what time they have their lunch period. And it just so happens that there are 101 students that are registered in band that we're working with this year, and the split is 50 and 51 randomly, so I don't know how I got that lucky, but the lottery hasn't been put in and out for me, so I must have used up all my luck. These are students that I have invited from some of the different instrument groups, so you can kind of get a little sample of all of that. And I didn't invite you here, students, because you play every note perfectly all the time, because we know that that's not true. I invited you here because you are the face of the Tiger Cub Band, and you represent all of us. And so, I'm very happy to present you to the Board, Mr. Nebelsek and the community here. We're just going to play a few songs for you, so you can see the progress that we've made since October 23rd, which was our first day of full band, and what a little hard work and practice can do. Our first song that we're going to play for you today is in the book, on number 14 in the book, and it's called "Rolling Along," but we decided in order to make it a holiday-themed song, that we would call it "Santa Was a Jolly Elf," and you'll recognize it right away. We're also going to play number 18 in the book, which we call "Go Tell a Reindeer." And we're going to play number 38 in the book, which is "Jingle Bells," and that's legit. It's really loud. So, we'll play, and they'll clap, and we'll smile, and then we'll...
Does anyone have any questions from Mrs. Beck, or even our musicians here?
I do. Any of these kids have any band training before fifth grade? Any of you?
A couple of them played piano. None of them have a great sound system.
Wow, that's great for only a little over three months in band there. That's remarkable. Awesome.
And Board members, I'd like to share that the growth of our school allowed our capacities to add programming, and adding a fifth grade band program, as a startup program, has put us now on a level of getting more children exposed than we could have ever done before. The fact that we have 101 that are candidates, Mrs. Foss, going back before we had the facility, there was a jump when we had the facility, and now when we've been able to staff it, I'm guessing that typically before, 40 and then 60 kids from a class, and now we're up to 100. And so, I really think that's going to greatly increase the number of students that participate in things throughout their high school career. Great job, kids.
I would, I just mentioned that, Mrs. Beck, I had heard from somebody in the public who was very appreciative of your job, leading the band, and how you're very welcoming and open to students of all abilities, and you want them to play, you want them to learn music. And so, I'm just really appreciative that you're doing that, and you're getting so many kids involved in music.
Great job, kids.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Foss, Mrs. Beck, and kids.
Thanks, boys and girls. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, guys. Nice job.
Okay, our next report will be Mr. Kristofferson with his Business Manager's Report.
All I have to report on tonight is the general fund, or 42% of the way through the fiscal year. So far, we've collected $6,521,000, which is 34% of budgeted revenue. Last year at this time, we'd collected $5,937,000, which was 33% of that budget. So far, we've spent $5,994,000, or 31% of the budget. Last year at this time, we'd spent $5,760,000, or 31% of that budget. That's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly? Okay, our next report will be Mr. Nebelsek with his Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, good evening again. Several things on my list to share this evening. First of all, we've pretty much completed the arena security system, and I think that's a very, very important addition for the safety of, of staff members that work here, particularly on, on, some days we have full staff down here and others not so much. But the recording of what goes on in a building that's open to the public, and having that constantly recorded to reference back, I think will have an immediate income on being accountable for who's in the building. We've had people before that have come in and gone through closets, or, or gone into concession storage, or that type of thing, and, and having that be constantly monitored and reviewable, I think lends for a better situation. The Board Officers will have some options that I'll be talking to them about at the next time that we gather as to some options they have for what you may or may not want for monitors in this room when you're in session. You've got some opportunities to give me some input on that, and we'll be talking about that. So, if anyone has an opinion on that or a question, all five of you are certainly welcome to, to ask me questions, or give Mr. Kristofferson or I input, before I meet with the officers on our next agenda review. We just began the, this fall, with a new School Resource Officer, in Officer Sam Fring. He's done a great job. He followed Officer Nathan Benjamin. We've had a wonderful run of officers, but one of the things that's a given in the program, since they're employees of the city, is that they often have tough choices as to when advancements open up, and whether they take those advancements. And so, Officer Fring, Sam let me know that he has earned the next step up to sergeant, so therefore, although it was to take place immediately, he's finishing out the, the December month before he goes to a different capacity with the Huron Police Force Principals. And, and I will be interviewing the candidate that they would like us to consider to replace, and that'll take place tomorrow afternoon at City Hall. Once again, they could assign anyone they want. I appreciate the professional courtesy that they allow us to participate in those discussions. Third thing I have is that we had the presentation on iPads last month. I'm ready to move into asking for approval of that at the January 8th meeting, unless there are concerns that any of you would have. If, if you've been satisfied with the answers to your questions, and you're ready, that gives plenty of time for Mr. Allers to work through the bid process, the, the requisitions, and all of those things. And so, I'd like to move forward with that at the January 8th meeting, if that's okay. Probably at the January 8th meeting, or the one later in January, I may have track coaches and an activities director in to visit with you about the possibility of allowing sixth graders to go out for middle school track. We'd like to find ways in order to improve our numbers of participants, much like we did with fifth grade band, which we've seen here. Sixth graders, by rule, are not allowed to compete at the high school level, so it would be a matter of getting students excited about, about the track numbers, and perhaps discovering a strength that they have, before they get into so many other things that they are not interested in that. So, we will be looking at the possibility of asking the Board for permission to consider allowing sixth graders to go out for middle school track. Just the point of history, as you go through the thought process on that, is that sixth graders can compete in the golf program, they can compete in the cross-country program, those programs that don't have a delineation between middle school and high school, they can compete, they just can't be on the high school team. And so, this would be allowing them yet another program. We've looked two or three times at trying to figure out how to do basketball or volleyball, that's more than club, and we have struggled each time with finding personnel and timeframes. We think sixth grade track might be a possibility, and, and so, I'm preparing you to, asking you to send me questions or concerns as we move forward to have a discussion on that. I'm calling for a Calendar Committee meeting on January 3rd, that's the Wednesday when we come back, from 3:45 to 4:45. School Board members are not directly involved in that. However, you have every right to offer input before that time, or during that time, at 3:45 that day, something we've done now for three years, is we allow public input, and you're very welcome to be there. If more than two Board members showed up, I'd ask you to only be in the room two at a time, because it's not a school board meeting, it's a committee meeting. Usually, Board members have, have not attended that, and I've tried to get better at the last couple of years, announcing that we will take testimony at the beginning of that meeting. Those that are involved in that, we'll finalize the list tomorrow morning in the Administrator's meeting, but it's, it's Administrators, teachers, parents from each of the buildings, and then we have a couple of community people, usually one from Parks and Rec and one associated with the state fair, that are involved in the meeting as well. I can share with you a predictor that right now, the odds of going status quo, similar calendar to what we have right now, are huge. The, the, we will discover, because each year we have a new set of, of parents participate, we'll discover that there will be high school parents who would really, really, really like to have schools start earlier because of dual credit classes that they have to start ahead of time, and because we have such a high percentage of students who are here anyway. And we have elementaries who enjoy the warmth of August compared to the chilliness of May, and, and would like us to stay starting after Labor Day. What we have learned in the time that we've started after Labor Day is that we now know that Splash Central has developed their schedule based on the college schedule and not anything we've done. We did not want to be the reason why it was or was not successful, and now they've closed a week before we are starting school, so I know we're not an obstacle with that again. The general consensus, oversimplification before we get into it, that I share here, and the public's welcome to react, so I have that information, but by and large, students don't care when they go, they just want to go to school. By and large, I already told you, the elementary versus the high school preference, and an oversimplification, but those that are not involved in the school or involved in the schedule, kind of let me know they like it after Labor Day. Just probably because we're a state fair town, and it's always been that way. So, I don't predict any major change in what we're doing, and I am going to ask the committee if they would like to consider looking at going two years out. This year, that would mean we'd possibly project two years of calendars to bring to you. Then after this, we'd still meet on a calendar each year, but we'd be meeting on the calendar a year out. It could still be modified if something came up, but the reason for doing that is that there are some parents in general, and moms in particular, who'd like to know graduation date a little bit sooner. And so, if we worked that two years out, that, that might be good for the person at the microphone right now. So, anyway, we're looking at that possibility. Any questions on the calendar? Does anyone make sure the public knew about it? All right. You have been approving, and there will be more in the, in the future, employees who are academic or behavior interventionists. And I know that you have received some information on that over the past months, but I'm repeating for the benefit of the community, these are people that have been identified through a school improvement program that has a grant connected to it. It's a grant that is only for this year, because it's the last one tied to the focus status, and we have graduated off of focus status because of improvement, where they can pinpoint the students who are hurting their own learning, or through their behavior or interfering with others, that we can get them more one-on-one help, and try to get their habits of school, habits of academic study and habits of behavior turned around earlier rather than later in their school career. And so, that's what these positions are, that we are hiring, because it's grant money that became available just a couple, just a few weeks ago. There's a new law in South Dakota, it was 2016 Senate Bill 129, which says that all certified employees must receive suicide prevention training before they renew their certificate. I find it actually advantageous that, that my certificate's up this next year, in 2018. So, Mr. Kristofferson helped me, and I put myself out there as a pilot to take the training that is involved from our protective trust that we're a member of with the Associate that is involved from our protective trust that we're a member of with the Associated School Boards. Because we're a member of that, they will furnish all of that training. I started at 3:30 today. I had a couple of interruptions, but I was finished right at 5 o'clock, winds up with the test at the end. If you complete the test, then you print the certificate, and then the certificate goes in with your renewal request for your state teaching certification. I wanted to take it before it was taken by others. I found the information to be accurate, and I found it to be very consistent with what I have learned about youth and trying to keep all children safe and help them make safe decisions. And so I'm comfortable with the curriculum and what was presented, and so now we'll be rolling that out to staff because each year you have approximately one-fifth of your staff that are up for renewal. So that's the legislative intent, to have everyone trained in the latest information, and I was comfortable with how that was presented. Okay, I would encourage people, we're going to be out of here in time, I would encourage people to consider going to the middle school concert, which starts in about an hour for those watching a recording later. Starts at 7:00 PM on this Monday night, and it's at the high school auditorium. Get in the holiday spirit and enjoy our kids with that. I want to remind everyone, and it is already posted because it's a public school board meeting, but the legislative luncheon is now December 18th. That is Monday, the 18th, from 11:30 until 1:00 at the high school in Room 8208, and all three of our legislators will be there. Mr. Christopherson has put together a fantastic packet of information, which is a resource guide for the legislators while they are in peer, so that all of those things they want to know about, the mechanisms of school, are in that resource guide. In addition to that, we'll be going over some legislation that I think is legislation on capital outlay that will allow the local school board members to go back into being decision-makers on, for schools that are below the state average on number of student, or number of dollars per student. And so therefore, when schools grow and you have more students, the school board would have some say in the facilities for that, and we'll be going through that with the legislators. And then finally, you received a email from me this afternoon, not intended to be ready for tonight, but as we gear up, which is the positions of the large school group when it comes to lobbying, and most important, I articulated in the email, those that I, as your superintendent or you as a board, may not be in line with the majority of the large school. And it's important to note that that's in our constitution and bylaws, that every school has the right and responsibility to represent their position first, and then there's the majority position of those that are there. That's a long list. I thank you for your patience, and I turn it back to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek. Are there any questions for the superintendent?
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving into old business, our one item of old business is second reading and approval of the TAP handbook revision. Mrs. Nelson is here. If anybody has any questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the TAP handbook revision. And we'll open it up for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the TAP handbook revision. Is there any, is there any discussion?
Those were compliance requests that came from the state, and Mrs. Nelson responded and reviewed it. Is that an appropriate description of why we're doing this mid-year?
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we will vote. We're voting on approving the TAP handbook revision. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, motion carries. That is the old business. Moving into new business, our first item of new business is an introduction of Section J policy review. Going to be no action taken. Do you have any comments, Mr. Nebelsek?
No, I, this is the formal introduction. Any comments? I say no and start commenting. Sorry about that.
Go right ahead.
I misunderstood the question. What I want the public to know is that all the administrators received the review, and you folks received it individually. Now it's in your handbook form. The left side is what we currently do, the right side is the proposal in it. Each of you should have a packet with that. If there's anyone in the public who has a concern, they're welcome to get ahold of a board member or contact my office just for a guide as to those that are in this group, our student handbook, student attendance, compulsory attendance, requirements for enrollment, enrollment of non-resident students, the education of the homeless, weapons in schools, search of students, student desks and lockers, student complaints and grievances, student suspension expulsion, reporting child abuse, communicable disease guidelines and reports, administering medicines to students, student fees, textbook fines, charges and student records. And so I also want feedback, if you like this form of what we're doing with the red line revisions compared to the consistent ones, because I'm knowing that it could, I could fall short. I'm already into about four of these in K, so that now that we have a rhythm, I can start reviewing ahead, get it to the administrators so that it can come to you. So this is the introduction. If someone's looked ahead and wants to make note tonight, if not, the next time will be the main question and answer on first reading.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments from any board members?
We had a few. I want to go through some. JA student handbooks, first one there. We typically, this doesn't talk about the process that we go through at the board level. We've typically gone through a two-step process to approve handbooks, where they get presented at one meeting and then we approve them at another. I'm wondering if we need to spell that out, should we spell that out? Should we say that they are approved by the board? Are we, are we okay with that two-step process? Should that be a one-step process? Our typical policy process is three steps, introduction, the first reading and a second rating. And so I'm just kind of putting that out there as like, our handbook process isn't to spell it out anywhere, and it might be good to do that since we're going over this policy now. I don't, I don't have any particular language to propose. That's more of a question for the board members to think about and what we want to have in policy regarding our handbook process.
Well, maybe we could just, if it's already a handbook and we revise it, it could just be a one-step process. If it's a new handbook, then maybe it should be a three-step process, and maybe that could be spelled out in here.
What do you say, a new handbook? Like, like every year we...
Every year, there's a high school handbook, so...
Yes.
Every year, we revise that.
Three steps too many?
Three steps is way too many if you already have a handbook that's just getting revisions in it.
I agree with that, three steps is way too many, yes. So...
Mr. Chair? I'm okay with you telling us to go to one step, as long as you're comfortable that you're going to approve it on the first night that you need to talk about it. The reason why we've been two-step on handbooks is so that you have one night when you could talk about it and send me back to the drawing board like you're doing right now.
Yeah.
And then the next night, hopefully, it was a finished product. I'm okay going to one step. I just want some guidelines as to what you do there.
Yeah. And it's, like, the one way, the handbook that we approved tonight was a...
Minor revision.
A minor revision that was necessary for compliance purposes, that we weren't going to do anything with. And so I...
That could have been possibly one.
That could have been one, but then we're getting into decisions about when is it one step, when is it two step?
It's nice to be consistent.
Yeah. So I don't know that we need to decide this tonight, but I'm okay with keeping it just as a two-step process in general.
But you just want it spelled out right now.
I think we should just say that, because right now, it just says, "The building principals are responsible." It doesn't even say that we have to prove them at all.
Okay. Is it, would it be okay if I worked a language to send out that said that in most situations, a revision of a handbook will be two-step? Board reserves the right to make that a one-step process with cause? Okay? You can alter that with cause, and that, that new handbooks, can't think of an emergency situation when you couldn't, but that new handbook should be a three-step process similar to the policy review. Is that... We'll work on language for that.
JE has attorney spelled wrong.
Which one?
JE, where it says attorney, and there's no U in attorney.
Is that why this is, there was an extra page on our desk?
That was the extra page, we should fix them.
Well, I didn't see the extra page.
Okay.
I was wondering why that was...
There it is. Never mind.
I was trying. Mr. Chair, I was trying to slip that by before our attorney noticed that, but I appreciate it being brought up.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't pick up on it, so.
Okay.
You almost made it. And then, one other item, and this is pretty, pretty uneventful, but JH, reporting child abuse. I was just reviewing that. The, in the 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph, it refers to the punishment provided by law if you fail to report abuse neglect, and the fine is not up to $2,000 on that, so. It's on JH. So that's just a updating from State Stat Unit, right there.
So is it okay, is there something you need changed?
The 1,000 should be 2,000.
2,000. Thank you. Okay.
That's all I've seen at this point.
Any other comments? That gives you a starting point.
That's why we do this.
We'll have it on the first reading in our next meeting. Okay, our final item of new business is permission to purchase two school buses off of the West Central Public School bid from Trucks of Bismarck in the amount of $166,450 to be paid for with the 2018-19 capital outlay budget. I'm going to ask Mr. Christopherson to comment on this. We are bringing this to you at this time because when I was working on the Clean Diesel Grant that was on the consent agenda, the bus sales company informed me that they were only going to honor this bid until December 15th, and at that time, this particular brand of buses anyway was going to take a price increase, and they wouldn't honor any old bids anymore after that. But if we get our order in this week, we can order the two buses for next year, and they'll be delivered to us in July, and we would pay for them in July, and we would beat the price increase. And along with that, the Clean Diesel Grant, the Formans and Miller has agreed that they would order a third bus in the event that we do get that grant, and then we would have the third bus at the good price also. And if we don't get the grant, they can, they'll take that bus and just sell it to somebody else. So we don't have any risk there. Okay. Thank you, Kelly. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the permission to bid for two school buses off of West Central Public School bid in the amount of $166,450 to be paid for with the 18-19 capital outlay budget.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Open it up for discussion or questions from any board members.
You said, permission to bid, you mean permission to purchase, right?
Where we're actually buying these buses?
Yes, permission to purchase. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Yes, that's what...
And we already bought two buses off this bid earlier this year?
Yes. You were presented with this same bid on October 12th.
Yeah.
And those buses were ordered, and they're due to be here later this month, and then we plan on probably putting them in service in January. Right now, we're running 22 routes a day, and we think we're going to be at 24 routes for sure in January.
And so the point of this is that we normally wrote, we normally replace two buses per year, and so we're just kind of getting ahead on that while we have this option to get a low-cost bid.
Right. Typically, I come to you in January and say, can we go out for bid for two buses, and we'll be delivered in July and paid for in July. So we're about a month ahead of the process.
Okay.
And if these buses are built and delivered earlier than that, they will hold them in Miller till, until July for us at no cost to us. Your motion to purchase, correct?
Right.
I misspoke, okay. Okay. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we are voting to purchase two school buses off of West Central Public School bid from Trucks of Bismarck in the amount of $166,450 to be paid for with the 2018-19 capital outlay budget. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. That completes our agenda, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded to adjourn. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Okay, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.